Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prethridge?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. Sably?
Here.
If you would care to join us, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now we move to public comments. Anyone wishing to address counsel on items that are not on the agenda, or if it's something on the consent agenda, this would be the time to come forward, give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes. Seeing no one hop up, I will assume there are no public comments. If you want to comment on something that's on the agenda, we'll recognize you at that time. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items that need to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved, and we'll move then to resolutions, and you can read the first line.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for the 2022 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grants Program.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second, and it's seconded. Thank you, David. Who's going to talk about it? You aren't okay, Bill?
Well, so the City of Oxford Division of Fire and EMS has experienced a growing increase in the number of calls for service from 2,347 in 2009 to 3,206 in 2022. That's a 37% increase. During this time period, we've gone from part-time department to full-time department, and currently we're staffed with nine full-time firefighter paramedics, three per shift, and they're also supplemented with part-time employees on Thursday through Saturday. So the city was recently notified of a funding opportunity to add additional staffing in our fire EMS division. Funding program is entitled Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grants Program, SAFER, and it is administered by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. The application deadline is March 17, 2023. The program was created to provide funding directly to fire departments to help them increase or maintain the number of trained frontline firefighters available in their communities.
Sure.
The goal of SAFER is to enhance local fire department's ability to comply with staffing, response, and operational standards established by the NFPA. So I'm requesting that council authorize the city manager to apply for a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant in the amount of $950,000 to hire six additional firefighter paramedics. There is no match for this grant. If we are successful in obtaining this funding, the city then will hire six additional firefighter paramedics once we're notified. This funding, of course, will only cover one year of expense, and the city will need to consider placing on the ballot, most likely in November 2023, a second income tax increase or property tax levy to provide long-term funding for this additional staffing. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about the funding opportunity.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Counselors, any comments or questions?
I have a question, which is, do the funds need to be expended within one year? Would it be possible to hire three firefighters over two years with the same amount of money? You know, how much flexibility?
I think we have some flexibility, and of course, it's going to take us some time. You know, there are a lot of departments adding staff to there, so we believe we have some flexibility. And Jessica, if you want to add something to that?
To answer your question, you could, you have three years in which to use the funds in case it's hard to recruit and takes you a while to find your staff members. But what you could not do is pay for three for two years. So once you hire someone, that's like a new hire, and it's meant for new hires, and so that's like an incremental step. And so, but you have three years to hire all six. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, the idea if we spent all that money in one year, and then we didn't have the funds, like, you would hate to recruit the people and not have the funds in the back end, so I'd rather, like, if you could phase into it.
They give you like a year for recruitment, a year for hiring, and then a year for, like, finishing up and reporting, but then they give you a lot of flexibility in that, you know, as far as if you want to move faster or slower, you know? But that's generally how it was built to work.
Great, thank you. And it would give them time for training.
Exactly.
Good question, David. Anybody else? Ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. We'll move to item D.
A resolution to collaborate with the Butler County Regional Transit Authority to apply for the Federal Transit Administration 2023 Competitive Funding Opportunity Areas of Persistent Poverty Grant Program and commit a 10% match up to $20,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded. Jessica, welcome.
Good evening. So this is a partnership grant, and we learned about this. Thank you, Jeff Robinson. He actually sent me an email and said, "Did you know that we are classified as an area of persistent poverty under the Federal Transit Administration?" And I said, "No, I did not." And so then I looked at this grant, and it is a planning grant, and it is really geared toward public transportation. But they have, so I called Matt Dukovich from Butler County Regional Transit Authority, and I said, "Are you going to be looking at this grant?" And he said, "I am." And he said, "Would you like to partner?" And I said, "I would." And so the three cities that are partnering are, if you approve, would be Oxford, Hamilton, and Middletown. And this grant also has a call-out for decreasing carbon emissions and climate sustainability as a huge scoring component. And so one of the allowable criteria for public transit planning is to partner with other modes of transportation and then expand pedestrian and bicycle access to public transportation facilities. And so what we are proposing to do is that we would do, if awarded, a planning grant that would finish up the planning of the entire northwest segment of the Oxford Area Trail, and then also all of what Councilor Prithrich calls the spokes, which would be determining where good connections from the trail to what I call business centers or employment corridors, what are those interior connections, what route should they be? And what's nice about this grant is it's not just the route planning, but it takes you through the initial engineering feasibility and what's called your NEPA review, which is your environmental review. Right now, when we get a grant for like our trail, we get, you know, we have the alignment already, but we have to pay for all of that route engineering and the NEPA on our own, and then the grant helps us with construction. So we would cover with this grant that middle bit that right now we're doing out of pocket if awarded. So there is a 20%, excuse me, 10% match, and so we are saying that up to $20,000 would be our required match for this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors? Any questions or comments? I think, I think we're all thinking this is a good thing.
And I love the emphasis on the 30% design, if that's what you're doing, which is like, we've got lots of plans with dotted lines. What we need is 30% design in order to go for grants. So that's what this could really help us with, so fingers crossed.
It takes you further than that. It takes you up to ready for construction, which is excellent.
Even better. Thank you.
I also think it's important to recognize that even though Oxford has this reputation of being a place with the university and with a certain amount of wealth, the fact that it's designated an area of persistent poverty connects with some of the conversations we've been having the last couple of council meetings. So I appreciate Acting Chief Robinson for bringing that up.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. We'll move to C.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with M&amp;A Coatings LLC for maintenance of a water storage reservoir at a cost of $245,300. Staff request an allowance of $25,000 for the replacement of existing structural materials if necessary, plus a contingency in the amount of $24,530 for a total cost not to exceed $294,830.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. And Michael, welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. We last recoded this tank about 22 years ago, so this coating is ending the period of its useful life. So it's much cheaper to take care of things than to tear them down and build new ones. So we advertised our specifications. We received seven bids for the project. We were forced to disqualify one bid. They had numerous errors and were definitely not the best bid. So we are recommending M&amp;A Coatings LLC as the lowest and best bid, and we've not done work with them previously, but have checked their references, and they're all excellent references. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I seem to remember the last time.
De chavu. All over again.
Is there anyone from the public?
I'm only going to do it one more time.
I'm not going to be around for that one. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors, you have any questions? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
And we'll go to number D.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Sunesses Construction Company for construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phases Three and Four at a cost of $4,490,575, plus a contingency in the amount of 10% of the contract price, or $449,057.50, for a total cost not to exceed $4,939,632.50.
And is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Mike?
So first, that's a huge number. We're building a little over four miles of trail. The good news is Jessica's done an excellent job of fundraising for this. She's raised over $3 million of this $4 million contract, so we're only using about 68% or strike that, we have grant funding for 68% of the project. So that is going to allow our levy funds to go much further and be leveraged again in the future for future phases. So that being said, Phase Three is split into two segments, and it is going to connect Bonham Road and Leonardell Park with Ohio State Route 73, and it's already constructed to go under 73, so there will be a good connection all the way to 27. And there'll also be a connector from Pepper Park at US 27 up to Talawanda High School. Phase Four is also being funded, and that is going to connect Talawanda Middle School on State Route 732 with the Oxford Community Park. And the original plan was to connect at K-Ranks Drive with the development of Al's Landing. We have some cost-saving opportunities, and we're able to cut through the development and make a connection with the community park. There's a little tiny piece that we'll need to build locally, and that's another resolution tonight. We advertised this project, and it is a bit concerning, we only received two bids for the project. They were, the lowest bid was right at our estimate, so we're confident that the price is valid and good, but contractors are busy and the plethora of federal funds out there, contractors can be more choosy and choose their more profitable projects. So we're pleased that we have the two bids. We do have experience with Sunesses. They built Phase Two for the city. We have a great relationship with them and expect this will go smoothly for Phases Three and Four. Be glad to answer questions.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors, besides saying yea, is there anything else? You have concerns or questions?
I have a question about timing, which is, all of this is happening in the context of big changes with our school districts that are going to remove some busing for those students who are local. So thinking about the timing, particularly of four, which it's an approach to the middle school, do you have a sense of when that project is going to, because it's, A, involves the creation of a new trail, but it also involves removal of an existing sidewalk? So the school year starts in mid-August. Where are we going to be with all of this before that?
So I don't have an official schedule because we don't have a contract with this company yet. That'll be job one to get a schedule. Job two will be to beat the bat deadline so that we can remove trees before the March 31st deadline. So we're already up against that. Our, this has taken longer to get to this point than we expected, and so that's disappointing. But we're here now and looking forward to move.
Yeah, I'm super excited. I just, we may have to have some kind of like construction progress mitigation. I don't know what that would even look like, but I think we're going to have a lot more kids walking and biking to our schools starting next fall.
Especially the part to, from Dana Drive up to the middle school is kind of the key portion, and so if that can be scheduled a little bit earlier.
Yeah, prioritize.
There is a note in the plans, and I don't remember verbatim, but it does address the issue, and there should always be a pathway. It may not always be paved or wheelchair accessible, but there should be always a pathway for short periods of time while the demo gets completed and the new trail gets put in place.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The resolution is adopted, and we'll move to the next.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Majors Enterprises Incorporated for construction of the Oxford Community Park Trail Connection to the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Four at a cost of $142,921.36, plus a contingency in the amount of 10% of the contract price, or $14,292, for a cost not to exceed $157,213.36.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded.
This is the small connector piece that's going to connect Al's Landing to the south of the aerial here, up to the pathway that's already built at the community park just southwest of the Aquatic Center. So we did receive three bids for this, and ironically, Sunesses, who won the first contract for 4.4 million or whatever it was, was not the low bidder for this little segment. So Majors Enterprises was the lowest and best bidder. They have great references, and we look forward to working with them and recommend your approval for that.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors? Nope? Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're looking forward to these projects. Read the next one.
A resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services project agreement with Barrett Becker Incorporated for the design and engineering of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase Five at a cost of $725,604, plus a contingency in the amount of $72,560, for a total cost not to exceed $798,164.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt. Michael, you're up again.
Phase Five is going to be a technically challenging segment of the trail to build. Ultimately, it's going to connect Talawanda High School with Talawanda Middle School in Phase Four. One of the large obstacles we will face is the railroad and identify how to go over or under that and all the pros and cons that go with that. One of the factors that we used to evaluate submitting firms was their experience with the railroads, and our recommendation to you is using Barrett Becker, who has experience, and we're very comfortable working with them, and they've always delivered on time for us. So ultimately, jumping ahead of myself here, we did have a committee of the Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director, City Engineer, and myself. We ranked the two firms that submitted. Barrett Becker was the highest-scoring candidate, so we're recommending you approve this design contract with Barrett Becker for the development of Phase Five of the Ouch Trail.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, so this is, as opposed to the others, this is planning, so we're trying to get the plan done for the really difficult number five. Any questions or comments?
So I should give counsel a heads-up. We received firm pricing from Barrett Becker. Subsequent to that, ODOT has changed the rules on some of the borings that are required for the project, so our costs are going to go up a little bit. We're going to have to increase the number of borings we do along the trail to identify the geology of the trail. We will leave that in the contingency, but I want to alert you that the rules change and costs change, and I just want to make sure you're aware.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. And looks like we got another one. Two more.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated for the 2023 Street Resurfacing and Maintenance Program at a cost of $453,697.52, with alternative number one costing $49,490, plus a contingency in the amount of $16,812.48, for a total cost not to exceed $520,000.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Michael?
Most of the work in this year's program is in the Tolgate-Anderson-Erickson-Stonhedge area and a few segments on Beach and Collins Streets. So the city advertised for bids. We received four bids. The apparent low bidder unfortunately was not pre-qualified by ODOT, which is a requirement to be a bidder in the City of Oxford, so that bid, we're recommending be disallowed, making Barrett Paving the lowest and best bid.
And they have done this before.
Yes, we've worked with them numerous years, never a problem.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? I would just like to point out to the public that this is something that the city is able to do every year, that we take some of the worst streets every year and we make them better, and so it's ongoing process that we go through and that your tax dollars go towards.
Well, I would just also express thanks because this is a collaborative project between the city and taxpayer-funded dollars and the adjacent homeowners who are assessed for the costs to do the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, which is their legal responsibility, but ultimately it's a team effort. I know that the costs on everything have gone up for the city and for the homeowners, and so what were already high costs or even higher costs now, and so for those folks who are having to bear those costs, I mean, again, it's a legal responsibility, but whenever you have to do it, it's a lot, just like it's a lot for the city, you have to budget half a million dollars. So I'm just expressing thanks to those people for what, effectively a partnership with the city to improve the streets in front of their houses.
Last year, our costs were up 32%, which is a huge jump. This year, they've stabilized and are more in line with typical inflation, but yeah, the prices keep going up.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Did I already ask that? I think I may have. Anyway. Thank you all. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Now, Michael, the last one. Go ahead and read it.
A resolution declaring that it is necessary to improve those portions of certain properties shown on Exhibit A attached heretofore in the City of Oxford, Ohio, by repaving, recurving, and repairing the sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded.
This is the first of four pieces of legislation needed for this program. It will follow Ohio Revised Code, Section 729. This is the first step where there's a resolution of necessity. Our Engineering Division has identified curb-gutter and sidewalk sections that are deficient to our standards. We've already sent a courtesy notice to homeowners or property owners, trying to give them a jump on the process, but if you pass this resolution today, that will be the official notice, and we will send certified letters to each property owner involved. Subsequent to that, property owners may make the repairs themselves or with their qualified contractor. If they choose not to do so, we will let a contract and have the work performed for them. We will come back to the city council with the resolution of actual costs, and then ultimately there'll be a levying ordinance that will assess the cost to their tax bill. Be glad to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? I have one question for you. Do you have an idea about whether, for a homeowner, it is less expensive if they get their own contractor, or is it less expensive if they have the city do it?
It is generally less expensive for the property owner to do the work themselves, especially if they can partner with some of their neighbors and get some economy of scale. While the city will have economy of scale, we also have the bureaucracy of prevailing wages and things that will escalate the price. So generally, it's cheaper to do it yourself under your own terms.
Thank you. We'll answer a question that I got today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I guess I would just ask a question for the public because this was raised on Facebook. I mean, people say, "Well, why doesn't the city just, you know, use tax dollars to do the sidewalks?" So I think I look at these numbers here and I see why we, you know, so can you just answer the question for the person who, why, yeah, so why do we need to assess people?
It is done in different ways in different municipalities. This practice has been in place for decades where the property owner is responsible for their curb, gutter, and sidewalk. Some communities- Some communities, they'll lump in the repairs with the construction project. If we did that, we would be building probably only a quarter of what we would be able to resurface. So when it, you know, could change paths now, which I would applaud because it's a tremendous amount of work for us to do it this way. Would not be very fair to prior years' participants in the program.
Yeah, you know, as Mike said, and that was David's point, if you look at what we have budgeted for doing the streets, we would have to reduce it back by 150,000, about a third of what we planned to do. So that's the main reason, basically.
Thank you, Doug. Are you ready to vote?
I have something. And then I think Jason has something as well. I wanted to address the, what David pointed out earlier, the increase in students who will be walking to school in light of the changes with Talawanda. And we received an email that asked, what can the city do about the sidewalks? And I just wanted to highlight that this is what we do about the sidewalks. So it's, you know, the sidewalks do get updated, but the onus is on the property owner, not the city, to make those changes.
Jason?
I just had a general philosophical point, sorry. I have a philosophy background, so it's hard to put that to trust. So I agree that it might be, and I'm not even about this specifically, but anytime there's something that could be made better but would then seem unfair to those previously addressed it, if you always hold that off, you never improve for fear of hurting most of the party there. It hurts.
Yep.
It may not be applicable here because we already have a system in place, lots of other things, but some to consider.
I would say where we varied from that philosophy is where there was never a sidewalk in place, the city has constructed miles and miles of brand-new sidewalks and not charged the property owners whatsoever. Ultimately, in 40 years, when those sidewalks will need repairs, the property owner, I assume, will be on the hook. But just last year, we did a new sidewalk to Kramer Elementary on North Locust and there were no costs involved for the property owners.
And again, that wasn't specifically about this. It was just if there's a better way to do things as a government, as a society, we have to find ways to transition to doing that and not always worry about it might be hurt or instantaneous versus the law.
Okay, are you ready to vote? Yep, that's a good point to make. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted and will move to ordinances, first reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3697, supplemental budget ordinance number two, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2023.
Thank you. And Joe, lead us through it.
Okay, there's just two items on this. The first one is to make an adjustment to budgeted revenue for the ARPA funds that we're getting from the county for a social service agency. And that's 1.5 million. And then on the expense side would be 1.5 million to forward those funds to whatever agency that is deemed who receives them. And the next one is just, we got our final revenue from the Oxford Cemetery Association. It was an additional $99,118.58, which is showing net revenue going into the general fund. And that's it.
Is there anyone from the public who wants to address this ordinance? Mike, I have a question for you, Joe. We are hoping that the commissioners in their wisdom will provide more than the 1.5. If that happens...
We'll just make it another adjustment. Yeah, I just wanted to get this and just...
Yeah, I just didn't want to send a signal.
Hold them up for a month.
I just didn't want to send the wrong signal to the people who are involved in those two organizations.
Right, I'm just going with what the original proposal says.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? This will come up for second reading at our next meeting. And you can read the second.
An ordinance accepting the recommendation of the Planning Commission to remove the planned development designation and approve a new preliminary subdivision for Heron Pond located along Kerr Road in the city of Oxford with conditions.
Thank you, Sam, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Couple of Planning Commission recommendations for you tonight. This particular property on Kerr Road has been in front of you a few times before, so this is a revision to the previous approved plan. It's actually a new application and the way we worded the ordinance, instead of having to do two steps, was to remove the planned development previous approval and accept the recommendation for a preliminary from Planning Commission. So the difference with this is instead of 15 kind of internally focused lots with a private street, this would be more of a traditional development. So it's a subdivision instead. So this would come back for final as well, but this is a preliminary. So there would be access from the exterior of the site instead of the interior. We had some good collaboration with the applicant, Bear Becker Engineers, and the owner on their behalf to make some revisions to it. And so we're at a good place now to bring forward that recommendation. One of the changes was to remove one of the development lots so that the ownership could stay with the church for the driveway because it would have been kind of difficult for that to happen, to access off a private driveway. They agreed to that. And then there was some coordination and wordsmithing with the completion of the sidewalks and bike paths. So that has all been completed and it's in the ordinance in front of you tonight. And I think that pretty much takes care of it. Had some good input from surrounding property owners as well. And so happy to answer any questions.
Okay, is there anyone from the petitioner who would like to address this initially?
Good evening, City Council. My name is John Baer with Bear Becker, 110 South College Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, HPT Properties, and Shane Kaufman. I don't have anything to add to Sam's presentation. Sam said we had a lot of back-and-forth collaboration, both with staff and with Planning Commission, and we're happy with the conditions as proposed, but are here for any questions you have.
Can you, before we go to the public, just briefly give us the why there's a change? That part wasn't communicated.
From the original proposal that came before you?
Why are we changing it?
Yeah, absolutely. So the original proposal that, for this property that came before, was a planned development with a street that stretched through the middle of this property and had small lots on either side of it to create a large number of home sites. And as the developer worked through the process of getting the city approvals for construction and the bonding in place and getting to begin those construction activities, it was determined that through the cost increases of materials and construction over the past three or four years that have been rampant, it was determined that the cost of construction was too high to make the project feasible. So this proposal before you, without that center internal road, reduces the development costs and allows for constructability without the increased cost.
So that when the consumer eventually buys a house on one of these lots, it's going to be less expensive? Is that what you would... Then if they had a road down the middle, like in the first one?
I would say more so the first one that came before you wasn't economically feasible to where the price of the lots would not be sold, if that makes sense. In order to make the development work, the lot prices would be too high. So now it's an economically feasible situation.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? Michael, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council and members of city staff. My name is Mike Rudolph. I live at 200 Morgan Circle in South Farm homeowners, South Farm subdivision out there. And I'm representing tonight as the president of the South Farm Homeowners Association, all of our homeowners that live in there. We are very happy to come again before city council, as we did before planning, in favor of this change of the way the subdivision will look. We feel that it will fit more in line with what we have out there right now with South Farm, much more conventional. We like the design going from 15 to eight that we have currently in this proposal. It does, as both Sam and Zach put in the staff report, it appears more conventional in the way that it will look. We also, I've heard the word collaboration used an awful lot tonight. This, as it's come before you many times, we've had a lot of collaboration with the developer, with Baron Becker as a homeowners association. We really appreciate Sam and Zach including us in this. We think this is going to be one of the nicest designs that could be put before you. So again, I'm here in all favor of this and hope that you all are too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address? Anyone else from the public who would like to address this? Okay, thank you, Mike. Counselors, any discussion, questions?
Just one informational question. The pond that's behind this subdivision, is there any plans to do anything around that pond? It's sort of like a barrier from the individuals that may own that particular land?
Not that I'm aware of, no, no fencing.
I just know that that pond gets a lot of use when it's warmer and was wondering if there may be any issues with people that are not the owners of those properties being upset regarding individuals being in their backyards, so to speak.
Good question. All right, I'm going to recognize Mike Rudolph because I think he wants to address that question. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you very much. I'd like to address Glenn's question there because that's a very good one. That has been one of the issues that our homeowners association has had to deal with now since the early 1990s, when our subdivision was actually put in place. We have a series of rules out there that do allow certain people, whether they're homeowners or guests, to come out there and fish in the pond and use it. It is a retention pond for the subdivision, but we also want to open it up to the public because it is stocked, fully stocked. We have a great relationship with Cobblestone Community Church out there where any number of groups of people can come out and use the pond. And to Glenn's point, is it safe? Should we have fencing up there? We've found over the years that it's pretty well self-policed. We have put multiple signs out there with lights on the top of the signs, with rings, safety rings, as well as lots of line. So we feel very strongly that it is a pretty safe environment out there. We've also counseled with our insurance providers, Fay Bruder, here in town about any liability issues that we have and they feel like we're pretty well protected out there. So it's a good question, Glenn, but I think we're dealing with that as a homeowners group. And the nice part about this change in the plan of this is that these new eight homes will be a part of South Farm Homeowners Association. There's not a need for a completely separate HOA out there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me address that.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
I guess I would make the point that there was some wrestling in the Planning Commission because it's, at one level, it's like, is this really a subdivision? This is kind of lot splits. And I think that some of us have had this long enough. We just adopted a comprehensive plan that kind of envisioned a more compact, traditional neighborhood development. I was just looking at our new comprehensive plan. This is supposed to be urban neighborhood, as I understand, traditional neighborhood. But this just shows the, kind of the disjuncture between what you say you want to do, which is optimize your land, get good densities, get walkability. But our current zoning is R2, right, you know? And our subdivision code permit gives them the right to develop. And so I think the Planning Commission wrestled with the idea this is not really the development pattern that we'd like to see our land used in. I think, but the reality is they have a right under the code to do it this way. This is conventional, low to medium density suburban, which is the way our corridors have developed. So it's not, it's like sparefield development, you know? But I think it just, I'm just making the point that like, we just adopt the comprehensive plan, but this is why we're going to have to revise our zoning code if we want outcomes that are substantially different from the conventional outcome. Which is like, what we'll be doing next year, right?
Yeah, I think if the property was slightly larger, it would have been a little bit easier to do more of a traditional urban neighborhood.
And I understand we would like to see the housing, but it, yeah, it's a little object lesson, but...
Good point.
Okay, thank you very much. For the public, this again is first reading, so it'll come back to us at our next meeting. And we can move to second readings?
No more first reading.
Go ahead and read it and then I will entertain a motion to table.
We still have one more first reading.
Oh, did I miss one? Oh, I sure did. Read that, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I was rushing ahead there.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit application to allow for the establishment of a restaurant use exceeding the Oxford zoning code's maximum parking limit at 5,000 College Corner Pike, Oxford, Ohio, 45056, with conditions.
I apologize for waffling on that. Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you. Another Planning Commission recommendation for... This one is actually a conditional use to exceed the maximum parking requirement. So there, that is why this got on the agenda. It's not what you may have recalled from previous restaurants where there'd be a drive-through or some type of a gas station type of use where there's a conditional use request for the use itself. This is a permitted conditional use where the issue was really about the, just the parking. And that was amendment made to the code in 2014 to kind of control the excessive parking expansion that had gone on, developed prior to that date. So the request was to have five additional parking spaces, to have 23 instead of 18. And because of the conditional use request, there's an option to request waivers within that. So the additional request was to have an additional wall sign as well. So that's why this was being requested. So that triggers the notification and opportunity for hearing. And the Planning Commission did hear comments and received some written comments as well, which was reflected within the recommendation and review. And those had to do with screening, fencing, security, those types of things. Planning Commission also discussed at length the maneuverability of the parking lot. It's a, as we discussed with the previous case, properties that are already pledged are sometimes difficult to work with and this was one of those. Waffle House's engineer and consultant did a good job of working with us on some of those challenges. There was an additional walkway added, which was a recommendation of ours as well. They decided that they wanted to also have the ADA accessible walkway, so there's actually two walkways. So the plans have been revised, consistent with the recommendations, and the recommendations still stayed in the ordinance just to make double sure that it's all in there. So with that, I can answer any questions. It was a fairly complex, thorough process, but I can answer any details that you might have.
So before we go to the public, the issue before us is the expansion of parking.
Five additional parking spaces.
Thank you. So for the public's information, we don't choose tenants. We don't choose which restaurants come to town. So that's why it's not a Panera. Only those who read Oxford Talk would get the humor in that. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? Okay. Hearing none? Any comments from council?
Yeah, I know there are some concerns. I'm wondering if our interim chief could speak to that about traffic and pedestrian congestion in that area from some of our community members.
So we've spoken with the community development department during their planning for this. And one of the concerns was obviously high traffic Friday mornings, Saturday mornings, Sunday mornings, how that's going to affect neighboring businesses and such. And I think some of the discussions we had were the additional parking. I believe they also had some fencing that has been approved to go up to help with some of the lighting and protecting the neighborhood from some of the light traffic or noise traffic that's going to be behind the property. But this is something we look at with community development on a number of properties in town. We do keep an eye on several locations that tend to have busy drive-throughs that end up stacking out onto main roadways. And so we do constantly monitor that and we're constantly meeting and talking about those problems as they do come up and as they get reported. So we're aware of it and we'll keep an eye on it just like we do with others in town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I want to just recognize the various people who have reached out to the city about this. I mean, some people have reached out kind of about the nature of the business, but that's not really the choice here. The more relevant ones were the people who I think are easy to sympathize with. It's those people who live in the Northwest Mile Square, who, which is the one stable or occupied portion of the Mile Square, which also happens to be adjacent to our general business district. And the nature of our zoning is that, you know, the general business district is a relatively, our code is relatively permissive and it's kind of auto-oriented. And so, and that's the nature of American commerce, the 21st century. I mean, I'm personally grateful this doesn't have a drive-through. Like, I consider that in 2023, a win. It will have less queuing, you know, and all that stuff. And so I think there's mixed feelings. And, and so I think there's mixed feelings in the community about, but like, I know my teenager's really excited about Waffle House. As I think a lot of people are, but I, you know, I think that it's really tricky. I'm really sympathetic to those people who commented and contacted us. A number of neighbors, particularly on West Vine, who, you know, this is currently a grassy lot and, and is, is, will be developed as a commercial business. And again, the nature of 21st century commercial is it's, it's not your neighborhood bodega. It will have traffic, and it will have dumpsters, and it will have lights, and, and it will, it will have 24-hour-a-day commerce. And I think rightfully, one can sympathize, I mean, this is why we end up with segregations of uses in our zoning, because we might not want those things right adjacent to us. But, you know, so I, I really sympathize with those things, but I, coming down to it again, is, is that it is zoned general business. The only reason this isn't a byright development is because they want to succeed with the parking, and we've set some limits there. But if, if, you know, it's, people say, well, if it's too small of a lot, like, yeah, it's really, I mean, it's, it's not too small of a lot for what they want to do. If they didn't want the extra parking, it wouldn't be here in front of us. They have a right to do this. We don't pick the businesses. You know, I'm grateful that this is a sit-down restaurant, that it won't have dry food queuing, that it won't have a speaker blaring.
And we got the screening.
And, 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 and I really do commend community development staff and the applicant for thinking about how best one can screen this to make it as good of a neighbor as it can be to the people there. I, you know, again, it, it doesn't change the view out their window. I mean, like, it will change the view, like, whatever we do is not gonna make this not a Waffle House restaurant. But I really appreciate within the purview that we have and within the property rights that they have, that, that, that this is a pretty good solution for this. And, and I just hope that the operators of this will continue to work, because things change, like, are there gonna be Grubhub drivers, and what about lights, and like, you know, so there'll be ongoing operations of this that, you know, have a part of collaboration to address issues. So if neighbors have issues about its operation, you know, then that's a separate thing. So, anyway, I just want to express my, my sympathies with those folks and understanding why they have those concerns, but why ultimately, probably gonna, I'm gonna vote to approve this in second reading, so.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any better?
Well, I was curious about parking for truckers. If truckers are coming through, where would they typically park that area?
Do you want to address that? Welcome.
Thank you.
My name's Walter Baronon. I'm with Waffle House. I understand your question. We do have a lot of restaurants that cater to the trucking community, but they're located in areas where you do have that community. We don't anticipate this being that, that kind of area. We anticipate this being, you know, after baseball practice and on your way to work in the morning and those types of things. And so for that reason, there's really not, in our opinion, a necessity for that type of thing.
Okay. Yeah, and I was asking more for the parking specifically. When I think about trucking, I realize there's probably nothing in my fridge or my cabinet that wasn't brought into town by someone who drives a truck, you know? They need to eat too. But I understand your argument that that probably isn't the clientele that we would serve, just because of the location primarily.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Is it possible, and I'll ask whoever wants to answer, is it possible to have a sign there that would restrict large trucks from parking there? Because I, I think that could bollocks up the whole thing if, if you had a couple of semis who decided to stop there. And if you had a sign that said, "No trucks," it might be.
We will have deliveries.
Which is fine. Or for customer parking.
See, why not? I don't, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't. I see many no-truck signs, but I'm sure we can come up with one.
I bet you can. Okay, that, that would be a good thing to look at.
I also have a question related to parking. Do we anticipate having to, whether it's OPD or more signage around people part, using the adjacent parking for the other businesses as overflow, which we would, I don't think, want them to do?
If it's, if it's off-peak hours for those businesses, and those businesses are okay with it, I don't expect there to be any problem with that. A lot of property owners and business owners will obtain some type of cross-access easement to legalize that use for the overflow parking. And I'm sure that would be a good problem for Waffle House to have. But, where they could, they could put up signs that would say, you know, if you're not a customer of Coldwell Bank or CBA, then you're gonna be towed, and the police department can enforce that too. So.
Cool, thank you.
With the different tactics you're using to mitigate against the sound and the light that are gonna be affecting the nearby neighbors, do you feel that it would affect them very much, or will there be additional light that is coming through their windows, or how noisy will it be for them?
There wasn't a noise study on its own done. There was a very specific request, if you saw, in the ordinance for a board and battened fence, which allows for, it prevents the light and the sound from traveling through the gaps in the boards. So that was, that was kind of a special request. The lighting is all downlighting. So there's not the floodlights that some of the actually surrounding property owners that are farther away are probably more intrusive than this adjacent business would be. So there's no way to predict all of those things. There are sound regulations, even if this business wasn't here, that are enforceable. And those can be measured. So that could be something, to Council Perthage's point, operationally can be monitored and based on complaints and follow-up, so. So I, I don't know. We'll see. But I think substantial effort has been made to minimize it to the greatest extent possible.
And is there shrubbery that can?
There's some landscaping, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. There's some trees that are shown in there in the cemetery, and there's some existing trees already in the area that are being retained. And Zachary Moore, City Planners, worked closely with the City Engineers Office too, to try to, there's a sanitary sewer line that goes through there, so trying to protect the sewer line while also allowing screening and trees and all those things is, is a lot to try to coordinate, so.
When I first moved here, that was Frye Avenue.
Fie, yeah.
Anyway, yeah, times change. Well, thank you very much for coming, and you know, I've been to several Waffle Houses, including on my honeymoon, that was our first dinner. First breakfast. But it, they, to answer your question and my observations, is that they didn't have, it's not like they're doing Yahoo out in the hot, in the parking lot. They're, it's like a Denny's or any other place like, like that, where the people go inside and they have their meals, and they're not waiting in a line to go through the takeout, so that's a plus.
I'm assuming there's also gonna be so much foot traffic right by those houses to get to the Waffle House, so I think there will, there's gonna be a lot of commotion, I imagine.
I mean, that's part of the reason for the fencing, to make sure people can kind of cross through there, which was.
And I'd assume.
They would have to go around the cemetery.
And I'd assume for, you know, for student traffic, they're gonna be coming for like a late-night crowd. Hopefully, if it's a late-night crowd, they're not coming in cars, but they'll be walking down High Street anyways, I would assume.
I'm sure they'll have their.
Or an Uber. Very responsible.
And not in the big-picture sense. I mean, this isn't, this is kind of an auto-oriented thing, but they picked as close a lot as you could get to the mile square without being in the mile square. So I think, I'm hoping this will generate foot traffic. You know, it's close enough on the College Corner Pike that, that the people walk out here. And I think, again, for, it's hard to fit in these suburban things that have to have lots of parking, close enough to actually be walkable. But given the limited number of sites, this is, is good, it's a good place for that, you know? I hope people walk here instead of all driving.
Or riding.
Yes.
I appreciate that you included bicycle parking. All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Now, I believe we can move to second reading.
An ordinance changing the names of future private streets in the Owl's Landing subdivision and directing the clerk of council to forward a certified copy of this ordinance to the county engineer.
Okay, I, just in terms of procedure, Mr. Kennard, we received a request to table this, so that they can reconsider their names. Do we need to have the motion in second, or should we have the tabling first?
Actually, it was withdrawn, was what they requested.
Withdrawn, yeah. Oh, if it's withdrawn, then we don't.
That makes it simpler?
That makes it real simple. Okay, done. Read number two.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision application and plat for Owl's Landing Block B, being a replat of Lot 4119 within Owl's Landing Block A with conditions.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Second. It has been moved and seconded. Sam?
There was one change. We added an additional condition somewhat related to the withdrawn ordinance, which is to make sure that the street names are ones that you all have approved. So we are vetting some new names. We're not ready to reveal those yet because they haven't been fully vetted, but if this is approved tonight, then it won't be recorded until those new names are approved.
I did get communication from a number of people who indicated they were relieved that that change had not been made, so we'll see how that turns out. Is there anyone from Owl's Landing Development who wants to speak to this? I don't see anyone. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Seeing none. Counselors?
Yeah, I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
When you said you had individuals that were relieved about this current ordinance that is being withdrawn and the changes within.
Yes.
Did they imply they liked the bird names?
They did.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, they, they did. They liked. Not so much Screech. But the other, I mean, it's Owl's Landing, so they wanted owl-related names. Even Owl's Landing Drive would be fine, but, yeah. Screech, they weren't too hot on.
It's a popular character.
I know, that's.
It had to have Screech Lane. Could have been Screech Alley. For their, for their discussion. Are you ready to vote? You may call the roll.
Mr. Perthage?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Snably?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. We'll move to number three.
An ordinance approving the second six-month extension of the final approved subdivision plat for South Forest Edge Section 1.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
It's seconded. Thank you very much. Sam?
No, no changes?
From last time?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the petitioner who wants to address this? Not seeing them. We'll move to the public. Anyone from the public wish to address this ordinance? Okay, anyone from council wishes to address this ordinance? Call the roll.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Perthage?
Yes.
Ms. Snably?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to number four.
An ordinance approving the second six-month extension of the final, approved final subdivision plat for South Forest Edge Section 2.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Alex, I appreciate it. Any changes, Sam?
No changes, thank you.
Okay. And petitioner's not here. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council? I think we talked it out last time. Okay, you may call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. It's a long day, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna start voting for all of you.
Dave will speak for all of you.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Perthage?
Glenn can vote for me now.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Ms. Snably?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. And we will move to announcements and communications, and I recognize City Manager Elliot.
Thank you. I just have one little item that I want to share with the council, the public. So we've been notified that our annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2021 has been awarded the GFOA's certificate of achievements for excellence in financial reporting. So this report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. And so this is quite an accomplishment. It's our 38th year to receive this award, so I congratulate our Director of Finance, Joe Newland, and his staff for this accomplishment. As I've said before, not every city goes through this, and it does take a lot of additional work, but it's a, it's a quite an accomplishment for the city. And once again, it's our 38th year, so we've been doing it for quite a while. It's a very important report. I know when I want to look up things from other cities, I look for their reports, and sometimes all they do is just what's required by the state rather than this comprehensive financial report. So, as I put in my report to council, you can find this report in last year's on our, on our website. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief.
Just a couple of quick announcements tonight. As a student of law enforcement, Sir Robert Peel said, and he's regarded as the father of modern police, and if you're not aware of him, he said in part, "The police are the public, and the public are the police." Over the past several weeks, we've taken a number of reports. They've involved thefts from businesses, damage to personal property, and we've had some assaults on members of the public. Many of these cases have been solved with much assistance from our local citizens. We often take time in our division to give commendations and awards to our division members and staff. But it's important to remember that without the willing and observant witnesses, many of our reported crimes would go unsolved. With that said, we'd just like to take a moment to commend our citizens and thank them for speaking up at a time when others do not. As the saying goes, if you see something, say something. With that, Green Beer Day's coming up next Thursday. So please, at 5:00 in the morning, if you see something, say something. OPD and MPBD, Oxford Fire, we've all been meeting, talk about what we're gonna be doing, our plans. Some of them will be very noticeable, some of them will be unnoticed, like the undercovers that, that we'll have in town from the state, as well as our investigations unit. But we're just looking at all the extra needs we're gonna need that day. And remind everyone to exercise caution during the daytime as we witness what all of us see at late night Oxford, come to our morning commute and afternoon commute from home and, from work and, and school. And then lastly, a quick update on Chief Jones. He's in his ninth week at the FBI National Academy and wrapping up his final assignments. His academic work during the week has focused on leadership, crisis management, and officer wellness. He's spending his weekends as any good student of history would in the DC area. And he's taking in many historic landmarks, sending lots of pictures, and getting to sightsee quite a bit during his personal off-time. He's in good spirits, anxious to get back to Oxford, so as he said in the most recent email, throw our daily routines that we've gotten accustomed to out of whack. Thank you. Thank you.
Joe, do you have anything tonight? Okay, Chief? Okay, thank you. Okay, Sam? Jessica?
Thank you. Good evening. Just a few updates tonight. Wanted to provide you an update that we have been working for a few months now on a tobacco retail licensing program together with the Butler County General Health District. So a special thank you to Sam and Jeff for helping, and Chris, for helping me comb through it line by line. It's like way more complicated than you think it would be. This ordinance will incorporate both a retail licensing provision and a density provision to try to, you know, not prohibit these tobacco retailers, but decide how many we have and where they are in town. And so a final review has been sent to the Butler County General Health District, and with their approval, we hope to bring that to you in April. So I just wanted to kind of give you a, a status update on that project.
And is it the case that there are other communities kind of waiting to see what we do?
I believe Fairfield has been watching kind of what we're doing, and Hamilton already has one, Kent already has one, Reynoldsburg, and a few other cities already have them. And then Doug and I spoke that we may explore a similar ordinance specific to marijuana retail and densi- retail and density. I tried in the last minute to, like, maybe put it in with this one, and that, it just didn't make sense to lump it together, so we might explore a separate one for a similar goal, to restrict where they are and how many and that type of thing. So stay tuned. And then I also want to let you know that I attended the county commissioners' meeting yesterday morning, where they did have an update from County Administrator Judy Boyko on their ARPA spending, and then she did ask for guidance on our two proposals. And then they did then hear public comment, and quite a few people from our community did attend and make comments. They did make no indication verbally at that time, but I would imagine that over the next several meetings, we'll start to see something emerge from those public comments. And so we'll just be watching the agendas to see when that resolution might come forward. So we'll keep you posted when we learn more. And I believe that is all tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. I'll follow up on Jessica's comments about the tobacco ordinance. Oxford is not going it along. We are certainly on the forefront of the movement to pass ordinances like this. But I think it's important, and you'll see this in the whereas clauses, the data's showing that the availability of vape products, et cetera, and I can attest to this firsthand as the former father of three teenagers, now I'm down to two, that there's a group of teenagers that they just don't see the danger in the products. And with the proliferation of vape products in this community, I think it's a testament to exactly how appealing and how the marketing is impacting youth. And so anyway, I want to be very clear about that, that this is a trend that is going across the state and the country. And indeed, we even managed to get the governor to veto a bill that would have prohibited our efforts to restrict and control this product.
Okay, thank you very much. Glenn?
Nothing, Doug.
Okay, Alex?
I have two things. So I wanted to touch base, we received a constituent email earlier today asking if council was aware of what was happening with Talawanda School District, and I think since it's come up a couple of times this evening, council is in fact aware. And I wanted to, as the council liaison to the Recreation Board, address a specific question in that email, which was, does the Parks and Recreation Department know about this? Are they planning for contingencies? And the short answer to that is yes. Parks and Rec is very aware that with sports being impacted by the lack of passing of the levy, that there may be an increased demand for Parks and Recreation sponsored sports teams. So everybody's in the know and is starting to think about what that impact might look like. And then my second item is, as a Miami alumni, I think I would be remiss to not wish the students a happy Green Beer Day in advance, but also please be safe for, if any students are listening to this, just be safe out there. Thank you.
To follow up on what Jessica and Chris had said, that I spent quite a bit of time looking up incidents of cancer from county to county, and there's certainly some counties that have a much higher percentage than we do, so fortunately for that. A lot of that due to pollution and that kind of thing, but the number-one cause of late-term diagnosis of cancer is lung cancer across the board, county to county. So whenever people think about vape products, it's important to know that it's such a new product, and we don't know what the complications will be. So it definitely is a public health problem. And I know that, I'm sure, whenever we're looking at the tobacco licensing, we're probably also going to be looking at equity, right? That the neighborhoods that are already experiencing poverty and blight and higher proportion of substance use problems are not the ones that will further be saddled with these establishments disproportionately.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing tonight.
I wanted to address the failing of the school levy and the cuts that are doing real harm, and I hope we do our best to mitigate those harms. But one of the things I've mentioned before that I'm concerned about is that if we end up adding on additional tax levies to address our fire and EMS, I think it'll hurt the odds of passing the school levy going forward, which will make these cuts more permanent. And even worse, it's going to get worse with time, because even under those cuts, it doesn't solve the issue long-term.
There's more.
Yeah, it'll just keep getting worse. So we basically need a levy. I hope we mitigate everything in between there, but we're going to need a levy to address that. And I think if we have other levies being put forth for stuff like fire and EMS, it will hurt the odds of that passing, and I don't want to see that. So I hope we focus on a solution there and work with Miami to get there.
Okay, thank you.
So to pick up on what Council French was saying, so we do have a Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, and we've had conversations about how engaged we should be, but, you know, our current chair, Carla Blackmore, is looking ahead and saying, "We're going to see some serious transportation pattern changes in the next, in the upcoming months around." If there's no more busing, the amount of traffic volume that we're going to see around our schools, the pressure to walk and bike, and so it's, there's limits to what the city can take on of things that are ultimately Talawanda's responsibility, but things like safe routes to school, which we did about 10 years ago, we've made some good progress with that. We might have to dust off some of those plans to identify, like, you know, if we're going to have a lot more kids walking to school, what are those pinch points and those danger points that are city-controlled, that can we do anything about to make it better? You know, signal timing or something. So I think, I anticipate that the Police Department is going to have to work, and this is why having something, because it's a, it's an interdisciplinary problem. It's going to be policing, I mean, it's going to be traffic stacking up around schools, it's going to be kids walking to school. I think it's going to be a little messy in August, and I hope that the city can do what it can to support the school district. We can't take on more than we can take on, but within our means, if you know what I mean. So a little thing, we did get a constituent's email, and this is something about the mayor's monarch pledge, which, we have these council goals, and we could say, "Well, that's not on the list, we can't do it this year." I was looking into it, and basically, all these other things we're doing qualify us for the pledge. So basically, what's required is the mayor to sign on behalf of the council. The checklist of things we're supposed to do are things we're already doing, pilot gardens, the naturalization master plan, thinking about some kind of ordinance change, like, we're satisfying the substance of it. There's some reporting at the end of it, I don't know how involved it is, I don't anticipate it's involved, but we would have to look to see, like, if there's reporting, who does it? So I guess the question is, is with something like this, do we say, "Full up, no," or this is a small symbolic thing for something we're already doing, is there council support to just maybe at least look into, like, how much reporting is there, is this going to add extra staff time or not? And so I just, before that email, emails that are, like, three days old, are already in the past and received. I can't, you know, I'm so busy now. I just want to catch up the sentiment of the room about whether this was worth exploring further, and if it was really no additional significant cost to us, whether we wanted to do it for symbolic reasons, or whether we just want to be, like, not this year.
I've gotten several of those. They're basically the same letter from different people, and I appreciate it. And my intention is, when things calm down a little bit, to look into it in more detail, and then maybe we can have a work session or something to discuss it so that everybody knows what's involved, but my inclination is to support it.
Yeah, I guess I would say, it depends, we have limited bandwidth, but having looked into it, it's literally, we can check the boxes. But again, I think we want to defer the staff on this one.
Yeah, I don't want to take up a lot of staff.
Yeah, I don't want to put, but if it were minor thing, that's, you sign, and then we do a Google form at the end of the year, and there's some recognition, and Hamilton did it, Yellow Springs did it. Like I say, it's not on the list for this year, but if we don't talk about it now, I'll forget about it.
Right.
So that's all, you know, just want to raise that.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you raising it. I'm inclined to support it. I'm reacting positively to it. The other thing I wanted to comment on, two things. One is the license, excuse me, the licensing issue, and something that Chantel mentioned, there is some research that is indicating that it is not only as bad, but maybe worse than tobacco. So it's not just that we don't know that it's dangerous, we know that it's dangerous. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to support the Coalition for a Healthy Community in the Oxford area, who is behind this 100%, and so I hope we move forward with it. The second thing is that on April 22nd, one of the top events of the Oxford community will be taking place, and that is Kiwanis Pancake Day. Now, this is bigger than the Chili Supper. I mean, everybody shows up for the pancake dinner, so I want you all to put that on the pancake breakfast. It goes really till lunchtime.